Equals two and a half tons. Wheelbase of one hundred eighty-nine inches, which is fifteen point seven five feet. Overall length is twenty-two point five feet. From the front tire impression of the tire, three, three feet. Rear tire from curb, five feet, four inches. And the curb is straight. Rear tire, hundred percent no good. Rear rim is broken. It knocked down the center block of my neighbor. And, you know, I've been talking about this for a long time. It has to be fixed. I know you can blame it on the driver. The driver of the vehicle, his car was straight in to his sidewalk, to his house. Not his car, because they don't have sidewalks on there. They're forbidden, I guess. And the, the driver took a walk. Didn't stick around. We could, no. I'm not gonna run after somebody that hit my car. I'm not gonna do that. It took the deputy quite a while to get there. And from what I understand, I look at the sheriff's car, but they were marked Santee. I'd like to know, and my neighbor would like to know, why the Santee deputies came out? And there was no investigation. It was just, oh, well, this is what happened. Car hit the wall. So it has to be taken care of. Fortunately, it was in the middle of the night. And there were no people walking. People walk on that street. Okay, quiet.
Uh, thank you so very much. Uh, next is Stephen Pedro, followed by Nick Rubio.
Yeah, I took, I took these pictures. On the accident, I heard it called twelve thirty. And John, like, probably called nine oh one, took the phone. I couldn't have, obviously, show up. And I guess they're Sante. But if they came here sooner, they could have caught the guy walking down the street. I was gonna chase after me. That wall wasn't there, probably wouldn't, wouldn't have went by that one. It's like the fifty-sixth time the wall been hit. Went through the wall. Had a log out there, telephone going right. Took care, we, we did his job and apparently the guy had insurance. But then I called the insurance company. Oh, they, they canceled it, you know, we must have played it earlier, you know? And now I'm stuck with this, you know? My insurance and we've been over this plenty of times trying to get speed bumps. Even the damn, and even stop sign would help, you know? You know, how, how much does cost for a stop sign? Most, majority of people go stop, you know, the, the people go to, they go at the stop sign. Or speed bumps, you know? For, I mean, I've been out of cities, so Mesa, San Diego, uh, schools, they have speed bumps everywhere. But we can't even get speed bumps down, uh, San Miguel. That road, that road's terrible to go speed bump by that school or the other school. Why can't we get speed bumps like the other cities do? And, uh, ongoing thing. So we come, you know, the, 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 the complaints and things like that is getting done. You know, you listen to us, but it goes in one ear or the other, you know? That's probably gotta say it. Listen to the people who live, you know, on the road, you know? You know, you do the streets, the streets need to be, but need, need to be, be done, you know? They're all puddled, they're all filled in, that's about it, you know? Can't you ride a bike on the streets? Let's walk on. I just got fed up and I walked on the, on the road. The streets are, they're, they're just looks like crap, okay? You could have jumped a cop where you had, you got, you know? Yep. Yell them very street cop, that, that road's terrible there. Look, the streets need to be repaired more. That's why I have to say it.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Nick Rubio, followed by Michelle Kerr.
I don't see a thing. Um, just wanted to keep you updated on our, our union bargaining. We, uh, got a fourth inch TA this last time. Uh, that was small, but, you know, still another little thing, not a way. It's a mildly reimbursed reimbursement out of class assignments, um, leave time requests and anniversary readings. Small, but another step forward. But, uh, one thing we are still having disagreements with, uh, and hopefully you guys are gonna talk about this later tonight, is our ten-hour work week, our ten-hour work day and week. Uh, we are still shorted an hour forty-five minutes roughly each week. And accumulated over the course of the year, that's about a thousand hours. Um, a thousand hours that we uh, you know, that we can money out of folks' pockets, uh, hours worked out there in the streets, getting stuff done for the city. I mean, it's all around that. Um, and the other is the standard steward city hours. Um, right now, the, uh, city wants us to have a cap of forty hours for our stewards. Um, that really isn't much of anything. For example, we've already accumulated twenty hours for just one grievance. Um, and that's just one grievance in a year. Not saying that we're pushing grievances all the time, but that's just one, and that's half the cap already. Um, no other cities in California in public works have caps at all. Um, and we still haven't heard the exact reason why their cap is needed. So, I mean, any explanation would be nice, but, um, at this point, we should still continue.
Thank you so very much. And finally, we have Michelle Kerr. And the general public unfortunate of the agenda is now closed.
Good evening. Um, I also wanted to follow up on the situation with one twenty-seven having not completed the bargaining for their first contract, when it's been over a year. There are still thirty-plus articles that haven't even been responded to. Again, um, they were all turned in June twenty twenty-three. Um, I understand that the financials have not been turned in. So that I, I really don't understand how many of them can even have a budget to be working with if we, if the union doesn't even have the financials to be able to complete the bargaining. Um, so I really would ask you to please make this happen. Um, also, I know that there are, um, issues that they have talked about about only being able to work thirty-eight point two-five hours um, in a week, which makes it when there's so much more work that needs to be done for our citizens. It seems that a forty-hour week, that is something that should be a small thing to be able to negotiate. Um, so that it's clear that the work week is a one day fifteen minutes extra and another day, you know, thirteen minutes less. So I would ask you to, to look at this. The, the council has the ultimate responsibility, the ultimate power to make this contract be complete. Uh, also, you might wanna consider getting an independent civil service commission for Lemon Grove, given that I understand that they all received emails saying that as, assuming or believing that they were salary for public work people and that they were exempt from things. That is something that would really help that an independent agency be able to oversee that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so I will move to the consent calendar. Uh, do we have a motion to approve, um, the consent calendar?
I, um, approval, second.
Do you have a motion and a second? I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
The motion was made, the motion was made by Mayor Potem Mendoza with a second by Councilmember Snow. I will now conduct the roll to go on the record. Councilmember LeBaron absent. Councilmember Gasteel?
Here.
And yes or no?
Oh, I see, I mean, yes.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
The motion carries on a vote of four zero one.
Thank you. Uh, we do not have a over hearing tonight, so we'll move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number thirty-four. Amending ordinance number thirty-three describing methods to uh, calculate Lemon Grove sanitation district sewer service charges. And I'll turn this over to our city attorney, Kristen Seiki, uh, to provide, um, the update.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, I'm sorry, the district board, um, the council is acting in the full capacity of the district board on this item. Um, as the mayor indicated, this is, uh, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number thirty-four. At the district board meeting on June fourth, uh, twenty twenty-four, the board consulted the public hearing and introduced ordinance number thirty-four entitled An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number Thirty-Three of the Lemon Grove Sanitation District Describing Methods for Calculating Sewer Service Charges. This ordinance establishes rates and methods of calculating annual service sewer service charges for fiscal years twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Uh, there were no, no public speakers for this item and there were no, um, objections to the adoption of the ordinance. The, uh, first reading, uh, was adopted, uh, four, four zero with, uh, Councilmember Gasteel, sorry, District Board Member Gasteel not present. Um, this item continues the ordinance adoption process by recommending the second reading by title of ordinance number thirty-four. If adopted, the proposed sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five will take effect July first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and the recommendation is to conduct the second reading of the ordinance and, uh, make a motion to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll check with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips.
Madam Mayor, we have no speaker slips for this item.
And so we do not have any speaker slips, so I'll go right into, uh, the motion to approve this item. Do we have a motion?
What was it, sure, do, do we need a motion for a second reading?
The motion is only to conduct the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Oh, so it's one motion to conduct the, I'd like to move that we conduct the second reading and, and, and adopt the resolution.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Now I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
The motion was made by Director Gasteel with a second by Vice Chairman Mendoza. I will now conduct the roll to go on the record. Director Gasteel?
Aye.
Director Snow?
Aye.
Director LeBaron absent. Mayor Potem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
The motion carries on a vote of four zero one.
Thank you. Item number three is to discuss and advise of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five city council priorities and work plan. This item was continued from our June fourth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. I'll turn this over to City Manager Lydia Romero to present staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Um, the clerk's gonna help me advance the slides. Um, next slide please. So we're here to discuss your twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five city council priorities. Just a little background for some of you that are in the audience. We had our workshop on the twenty-second of, of May to set the priorities. They discussed, um, what we would like to do or what we, what vision they had for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five yet year. And then again, once this discussion happens today, um, and I'm gonna ask you to pull the nineteen top goals down. Any additional funding that needs to happen will be included in the budget that we adopt next week. So as you recall, all of the council members participated in our multi-voting exercise in which we discussed the priorities that you discussed from the facilitator. And then there was an opportunity for residents to vote on those same very, um, priorities. I believe in total, we had twenty-seven priorities and everybody got thirteen dots to put on, but they figured it was the biggest priority for, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five year. As a reminder, um, when we were discussing this on the facilitation, uh, the, the goal of our priorities are to be achievable, have high impact, and stay within the current staffing resources and funding. Um, and the goal, the goal is to work towards those goals. And this is miscategorized. I forgot to change the, uh, slide here, but these are really the twenty-four, twenty-five strategic priorities that you had all settled on. Um, and there was one change from this year, from last year to this year, and that was, um, storm drains, which I did not fill up. teaches me on doing these at midnight. Um, public, the public, um, uh, so one of the priorities is public street, storm drains and sidewalks. One of the priorities is community life. One of the priorities is revenue, economic, economic development and our budget. And then the last one is public safety and public safety. So, so I'm not going to read the slides. Um, PowerPoints are available for the audience over, um, on the table over there. The council has those. Um, there are very specific, uh, goals under each one of the priorities. Um, I just listed the priorities out, um, in no particular order. Oh. Um, in the order in which the council approved these priorities. Um, and these, these priorities have received three or more dots from the city council members. And so this is the list. Street repairs, storm drain repair, sidewalk, parking policy, sales tax measure, downtown village, village plan, next slide please. Economic development plan, business, community engagement, homelessness, city council meeting, broadcasting, housing, regional energy option, options and healthy food and healthy living advocacy. So those are in the list of the council priorities. Those council priorities in total is in total is, uh, eight priorities of the city councils. Excuse me, nine. Nine priorities of the city council. The next slide? These priorities that were of the residents that voted, um, do not mirror or mirror the city council priorities. There was some alignment on some of the resident priorities, but these are the ones that did not align, but received, um, uh, five, five or more votes from residents. Connect Main Street, completion, audit follow-up, traffic calming, Parks and Recreation Foundation, and city media, city media support for resident-led initiatives. Those are five additional options to the nine that we have. So so of the priorities that the city council discussed, eight of the priorities are carryover priorities. Six of the priorities are brand new, and then we have the five resident-only priorities.
What is their base?
Um, normally, at this point, um, there is a list and there's staff resources and money. Because there were nineteen priorities that were in total, staff was very uncomfortable in choosing which priorities to move forward. So staff is here today to ask the council to streamline these nineteen priorities to priorities that meet with the smart goals, so very specific, measurable, achievable, resident, uh, relevant and time-bound goals. Those are smart goals that allows us to try and complete these projects within one or two fiscal years. Next. So on the next slides, and I understand it's a little hard to read the slides, but the council has, um, the, the slide presentation in front. Staff, staff made a, an attempt as a sort of guidance for the city council to look at some of these goals. Um, and these are the goals that staff is recommending the city council support to move forward for this fiscal year. Uh, one is street repair. That is the, that is a, a goal that we will always have with our PMP and the focus on on street repair. And you'll see later on in the budget presentation, um, our transit money and our F P one money is largely, is largely towards street repair. Staff may request that the city council, um, although a very big priority, that may be something we could talk about being an ongoing effort opposed to a specific priority over several budget years. I think previously, this was really focused on PCI, under twenty-five PCI streets opposed to generic streets. So that's something for the council to consider. Stormer drain repairs, this is a new, this is something that is ongoing and staff is paying attention to it. Um, we, um, are looking at trying to get more additional dollars for this specific, um, priority. But this is something that staff recommends that we retain in heat so we can make some progress this year, like we did with the streets in the previous years. Same is with sidewalks. Um, again, looking at the sidewalks and the obstacles as we're making a conservative effort. Again, it is a carryover provision from last year that staff is continually working on and we, we will have the staff as it comes. The next one is the parking policy. It is not italicized. Staff thinks that this is one that we could put in what we call the over-reel parking lot. If you're in, you know, facilitation mode or meeting mode, we can probably carry this one over to next fiscal year. There's no immediate concern on this one. Um, if it does become a relevant resident issue during this fiscal year, staff will surely bring it back to the councils either, um, before or during mid-year, uh, mid-year development. The next item on the list is the sales tax measure for the twenty twenty-four ballot. That is currently underway. And I know that the subcommittee has planned to come back to the city council at its second meeting in July to have further discussion to perhaps get a ballot measure on the ballot. And staff is really hoping that this, this particular goal is carryover goal for this next fiscal year. Same, the downtown village specific plan, which is a brand new goal, that staff would love to have this as a priority so we can continue as a focus for grants um, and the various grants that come up through the remainder of the, this beginning fiscal year on and toward the end of the calendar year, so we can start working on this strategic plan. The strategic plan is very much connected to our housing element, which in which you finally approved during consent calendar. Um, and it, it is one of our economic tools for our damn town and the economic vitality for the businesses. Next list, next slide? Uh, conversely, the economic development plan. Um, this has been something that's been on the council's priorities for several years. I have some RFPs on my desk that I have not been able to review and get back to council. Staff is suggesting, because we're so far down the road, we can take a look at this. And this might be something we can bring back relatively quickly, um, uh, to the council, especially since, um, we have a new finance director starting in two weeks. Uh, that will free up my time tremendously, so I can focus on these goals and in much more focused and precise manner than I have in the past year. The next goal is business community engagement. Um, staff is not recommending this goal for right this fiscal year, but perhaps I can talk to whomever is awarded the RFP for the economic development plan and have them put that as part of the report to council that they complete for the economic development plan, um, I, the business engagement piece. The next goal staff is recommending is homelessness and implementing some best practice strategies. The current addition to my office, the senior management analyst is currently working on the strategic plan um, that should be back to council in, um, sometime this summer to look at a strategic direction and get council's, um, uh, feedback and support for where we're going, especially working not only as Lemon Grove, but as part of the East County with the other three cities and with the county of San Diego. Uh, the next is, uh, again, another carryover. The city clerk, I know, is working on the report that should be to council in, uh, probably the next, this summer, um, uh, to focus on, um, readapting the city council chambers to accommodate uh, future broadcasting meetings, both either on a livestream or on cable or both. Uh, the next item is a carryover item from last fiscal year. Um, staff is underway with that. We are in the midst of the, um, hiring a consultant to help do the outreach so the, the community can have a say on what these sort of plans look like. Um, for those members of the public, we're looking at perhaps, um, doing a very, a big vision of actually maybe putting some senior housing where the senior center is and retaining where the senior center is, but going up. Um, the next two items, staff is asking to put this on hold until we get a little bit of breathing room and capacity. Both of these would require, um, extensive learning from both on staff, me and myself um, on what the regional energy options are and what the healthy food and living advocacy is. Both will require partnerships with county or nonprofits. Um, and so i- if we could perhaps revisit this again mid-year or have this as a carryover goal for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, once we complete most of the other goals that the staff is recommending. On the list of priorities for home residents, um, staff is recommending that we continue with Connect Main Street. Um, that project is currently underway and, um, it is a very attractive granting project. And, um, staff would like to complete the full Connect Main Street. The council is okay bringing that over. We can concentrate on making sure that we get to complete Connect Main Street opposed to sections one through four. One through six completed. Staff is not recommending on the audit follow-up, although this practice, um, with our new finance director will be top of mind. Um, I believe I may have told some of you this, you know, one-on-ones, but the new finance director is a former auditor from the IRS, so she comes with very strong skill sets, um, in that particular now. And we're very excited to have her with us. The next one that staff is recommending is continuing looking at traffic calming strategies. As you heard during public comments, we still need to, we still need to look at those efforts so we can try and create some safety for multimodal transportation, especially those who are on bikes and those are walking in all of our streets. Um, re- uh, regardless of whether they're arterial streets, collector's streets or neighborhood streets. They should all be safe for multiple modes of transportation for our residents and visitors. And the second two, uh, again, staff is not recommending moving forward, uh, because those, you, these are both heavy lifts for staff. You know, and I'm very concerned about staff's capacity at this point, is the Parks and Recreation Foundation. Um, that is, there are several cities that have this effort. Should we get a sales tax on and should the sales tax pass? And should the council and the independent group committee decide that we create a Parks and Recreation Department? This would be a perfect project for the new director to work on if the, they are indeed hired and we do establish full Parks and Recreation Department again. And the next one is city media support for resident-led initiative. Um, I need to have a, a, a formal conversation with my communication specialist. He's, he is, um, very busy right now and, and adding another project to his platform will probably not help. So I've gotta figure another way to do this. And, and so it's a laudable, it's a laudable goal to make sure that we have sort of one location that, um, all, um, nonprofits in the Lemon Grove community or nonprofits that serve the Lemon Grove community, um, or individual groups can put their information on a sort of central location. That is something that we could work on, but right now, we just don't have the capacity. We're still working on getting our newsletter up regularly, our Facebook page and some other information on our website. So he's, um, he's very, um, overwhelmed right now. So we wouldn't be able to, to do this without his cooperation. So with that, staff is recommending So with that, staff is recommending nine priorities of that big list. We believe that most of these, most of these items are achievable and completed this year. They will have high impact to the community and they can be done with the available resources, meaning with the current staff resources and the current budgetary resources. Those, again, as I said previously, those are not recommended. We are still aware of those. They will stay in our atmosphere at staff. If we find there's a good grant fit, we may bring that back to you to say we'd like to add this to the program. But we've got to make some concerted efforts, especially on those that are outside of sort of what we do day-to-day. We're going to have to work with and have partnerships with the county of San Diego and some nonprofits to move those down. So with that, I have done a lot of speaking and the next steps are really the council discussion on these priorities. And if we could get it to an achievable final list, I will bring that to your budget, special budget meeting on the 25th, so for home adoption. If there is any additional cost, that will be incorporated into the 24, 25 budget. But most of the ones that staff is recommending are already funded and in some, in some senses are going to be carryover. And so they're already encumbered or already funded. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions on the council. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'll check with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips for this agenda item.
Mayor, we have no speaker slips for this item.
Thank you. And so with no speaker slips, we'll go directly into our discussion here. And I'll do two rounds of questions. And, but before we get started with the questions, I just want to confirm that you're looking for nine recommended categories from us or I just want to verify exactly what you would like for us to provide comments on. I think if this body can discuss the, the, the goals that receive the highest amount of votes from the city council and the highest amount of votes from residents and call that list down and it can meet within sort of this smart strategy, we would definitely appreciate it, knowing that several of these goals are carryover goals. And there are some goals that really should just be in our DNA now. We should be spending a large majority of our SB1 monies and our transit monies to ensure that we get some street stability and pay attention to both the streets that are already floor sealed and those that are under 25 PCI. But again, that decision is up to this policy body. Thank you so very much. And so I will now go to questions, starting with councilmembers now.
Thank you. Just a little bit on the background on this, we were able to have a priority session when the community was invited. And she get, in the PowerPoint presentation, you saw some of the pictures, but there were lists of the priorities up on the wall. And people were able to select which of those priorities were highest among them. And so one of the key considerations I have is even when I'm doing my own family budget, you look at what's our top priorities with a limited amount of budget. We'll see later this evening that we do have a balanced budget, which is super important. I listened earlier today in a in a meeting I was in with the East County Chamber of Commerce, that there are some cities that are really struggling and are not in a balanced budget. So Lemon Grove has done a good job with the money that we have. And now it's time for us to decide what we're going to do with our money this next year. We want to make sure that that reflects the priorities. And so this helps inform me when we get to the budget stage, where, where do I want to prioritize money because that's a lot of what, a lot of this takes to make, to make this become a reality within the year. And so some of these, I, I understand that on the streets and repairs, we were getting a bunch of the funding from SB1 and Transnet. From the storm drain repairs, I know that we have applied for grants and we're seeking other funding. And it was also part of what Congresswoman Jacobs had provided for us. Can you tell us a little bit about where the funding for sidewalk improvements would come from?
So the large majority of the funding comes from Transnet. And so it's a sort of a shared, and you'll see later in the budget presentation, we put some money towards streets and we put some money towards sidewalks. And I believe in budget presentation, we're looking at about $50,000 for sidewalk for this coming year, which is why Connect Main Street, just jumping ahead, that is creating new sidewalks in what is already public space that is currently designed exist both on with the concrete and with DG. So it allows different paths and different folks to use that power. Again, this helps with that sort of sidewalk construction and sidewalk.
Then the, I know on the Village Downtown Plan, we're seeking grant funding for that. So I just want to make sure that, is this a realistic goal for us to be able to accomplish if we don't get that funding this year?
This whole goal is dependent on grant funding, period. If we don't get the grant funding, if council would love to move forward with this outside of the grant funding, that is going to be about 175, well, our original grant proposal to San Diego is $375,000. So we could allocate that money from reserves for this special project, understanding that if we were to seek a grant, most grantees or renters do not give money for a process that's already underway. And it does not look like based on the state budget that this month, this is going to be funded by the state. It was originally a HAP grant from the state. The state has cut that. I don't know if the state is going to restore this for the next calendar year. It'll really depend on what their budget situation looks like. So this one is up to the council. If we want to move forward with this effort, we can accomplish it this year. But I am not too sure how fast we're going to get those grant funds. It takes, usually for grants, it's a six to nine month timeframe after the grant is submitted. So we, if the council would like this to move forward, we'd probably say, I'd probably come back and say, could we do an allocation of funding for this so we could start a concerted effort to move forward with this? If, if the council remembers and we had the presentations by our special planning consultant, the 375 A4 community outreach, and community outreach is relatively expensive venture because you're having meetings like this, you're going where our residents are at, so the residents come to you, preparing the materials and working languages, as well as making sure that the CAC, which is going to be part of the community effort or speed on this effort. So that takes a lot of time and money to make sure that that happens. Part of that is also CEQA. Whenever we have this finalized plan, we have to do a full CEQA on this one. And whoever consultant is working on this, because we need to have a paid consultant do this. We don't have staff capacity in the planning department to accomplish this the way it should be accomplished.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gastel?
Yeah, I think that, I think the challenge that most people have with goal setting is trying to figure out what is that we're not already doing that would need the special attention of being a goal. And I think on some of these, like on Connect Main Street, that, that's actually one of my highest priorities has been for years, but I didn't give it a dot because we've already been seeking grants and we've already been getting grants. And I couldn't think of what it would be that we, we would do differently if we moved it up, if we put it on the list. And I suspect, I suspect that other council members or possibly other members of the public had, had similar responses to similar items. You know, it might be worth noting that three quarters of our budget goes toward fire and police protection and animal control. And if you look at these, you look at these calls and you think like, so we're talking about how to spend the other 25% of the budget? Anybody else wondering about that? But, but the thing is, is that, that historically, and it's gotten much worse in recent years, we, the, the expenses on police and fire protection have been going up faster than anything else and crowding out everything else that cities normally do. So I, I think what would help me would be if I had a list one through nine of, of what the nine are, because when I try to make a list of nine, I end up with, with like eight or if I count them one way or count them another way. And they're, they're all important to me. The, the big, I think, I think the big question is, you know, what, what are the things that if we put them on the list, we're going to achieve something we wouldn't achieve if it wasn't on the list? That's, that's the $64,000 question. Unfortunately, doesn't have a short answer that could be read on a Q card. So maybe, you know, that, I think that might be my question is, what, what are, what is the list from one through nine that staff is recommending?
And, and so is so council, so councilmember Gastel, in the PowerPoint presentation, it just lists the priorities to the council and then it says residents, and those that are italicized are the ones that staff would like to move forward with, which is what is seen on the slide up here. With, with actually collapsing the business engagement and economic development plan on one slot, one goal, because an economic development plan, one of the aspects of it should talk about business engagement, what that means from the city perspective and what we should be doing too. But those are inclusive, not exclusive.
So let's see if I, if I don't see this, it would be street repairs. It would be street repairs, storm drain repairs, is in italics, sidewalks. Sales tax measure in italics, like it is.
Yes.
Village plan is in italics?
Yes.
Okay, and the economic development plan? And I think that we're saying that the business community engagement is a subset, is a, is a piece of the economic development plan.
Correct.
Again, I think homelessness is in, is in italics. The council media broadcasting is in italics. And it looks like housing is in italics. And that takes us up to nine.
Correct.
Okay, but then I see track, traffic calming on the public list.
And the traffic calming could be enveloped with street repairs.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I, I think street repairs and traffic calming definitely together, which will make sure that we're articulate about that. Okay.
And councilmember, if staff does agree with you on Connect Main Street, that this is a project that was given the charge of the city council many councils ago, and it is our specific plan. And again, as an attractive project that is ongoing, this is, this is something that the staff is interested in completing. And I don't think, if, even if it's not on the list, staff would abandon the project. Staff would continue to move forward with that project and continue to seek out those grants. Again, we sometimes have funding agencies come to us and say, could you apply for this grant? So we specifically San Diego, because they want to see this grant completed and done. San Diego is the underlying agency that actually paid for the specific plan to be developed. And they want to see that come to fruition.
Okay, yes, and that, that makes a lot of sense. And I wasn't sure if it was in italics or not, but I, but I feel very confident that it's on the list. I think, I think, I, I think I see nine priorities. Okay, so I thought, I got five questions answered. Just picking up each other's questions.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protona Doza?
Well, I, I don't have any questions, so I'll just Thank you. And I have a question regarding specific projects that are deemed ongoing efforts. Should we remove those ongoing efforts from the list because the work is actually underway? That way we can pare down the priorities and focus in on what they truly are. We know that this work is getting done and, and maybe it would be better to just choose like the top five priorities and allow staff to work on those priorities in addition to all of the other work that they're doing, such as the street repairs and the storm drain repairs and the sidewalks and Connect Main Street. We know that that's happening. But also too, I, I see the sales tax measure for 2024, and that work is currently underway. And it is moving forward and we provide direction on that. So I kind of feel like those items shouldn't be here on the list and that we should really pare that number down and provide a manageable, manageable number of priorities that staff could add to the list of work that you're already doing throughout the year.
So Madam Mayor, that's over here. You guys can make that decision on whether you believe the street repairs that we're doing is already an ongoing project and perhaps instead of street repairs, as continued to seek additional grant funding, that, that street repairs would include street repairs and traffic calming. And so we can focus in on the streets that are 25 PCI, that are near schools, that are near public facilities. That's a more achievable goal for grants that we can take away at. If you believe that the sales tax measure is an ongoing project that we were doing, just keep in mind if, if this does move forward and the council does, unfortunately, move, move this project forward, that will take some staff resources to, on, on the, not the political land, but on the questioning and making sure that we have the correct financial information. And it will, it will take up a good chunk of staff's time between when the council puts down the ballot and when the actual election is. So that will take staff off line for several months to do some of these other things as well. We're pretty good at balancing multiple projects, but we would like to balance and get some done at this time. And then again, for example, homelessness, we know we have to address homelessness, but I'd like to have it again as a strategic priority because that shows the community that you're serious about this project, you're investing time and effort in this project. And that is a little bit about what the goals does for, for the elected officials, letting the community, here's what staff is focusing on. They're doing the day-to-day work. We have to do the day-to-day work. We have to do the state mandates. We have to do what is required. But this is where staff is putting their extra time and effort in, whether it's collecting grants or looking at this particular effort so we can continue to move this, this city forward.
Yes, and with these ongoing efforts, would it be appropriate to, while we know that work is taking place and it's going to take place, to get a, a mid-year update on those particular items so that we know that they're moving forward? We know what kind of grants we are receiving or that are currently in motion. And we know the direction that the city is going to take as we round out the budget year.
Absolutely. It's been on staff's top of mind to make sure that there's continual feedback. The problem is, is time, time of staff to put those resources together so we can have a report to you. Like I said, I'm getting nearly fully staffed at City Hall. And that'll free me up to better focus on the council priorities and focus on the reports of the council. and that'll, it'll free me up to better focus on the council priorities and focus on the reports of the council, council priority, opposed to just going, 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 and doing, doing, doing. I can get some reports, so there's some feedback to you all, we're working out what the promises is. And the goal is to do that quarterly, which will be, um, posted both on the website and given to the council director.
I thank you so very much, and so I believe this is our opportunity to really, um, focus in on those key areas, provide that, uh, feedback to staff, and to provide comments as well. I'll start with council members now.
So I, I think that the italicized portion reflects what I also am prioritizing. Um, I have streets and traffic calming, sidewalks, storm drains, uh, homelessness, the village plan, economic development plan, housing, traffic calming, and Connect Main Street. Uh, and, and well, traffic calming also counted up with the, the streets. Um, those are the top priorities I hear from the community, that's what we heard in the priority session. The priority session really reinforced what all of us recognize when we're going around, walking around, uh, Lemon Grove. These are the issues that need the most attention. Uh, so I'm a hundred percent in support of these. I, I really like that we're actually doing something with homelessness, uh, the idea to hire a contractor to serve as a project manager advocate, um, bring in some of these services that our community desperately needs. We saw, you know, thirty-some odd homeless at the Point Town count, uh, previous to the year before, and this year we saw over sixty. Uh, so we see that a rising number, um, and also, we're seeing the greatest growing population of homeless are people over the age of fifty-five. And so our housing goal helps meet the need that we see rising in our community. So this housing plan to try and see if we can do a mixed-use property on top of the senior center, and have senior affordable housing on top, would address that rising need that we have for our senior population, um, to be able to stay housed. You should be able to retire and retire with a roof over your head. I can't imagine being on the streets at sixty-seven, eighty-two years old. So I think that that's a commitment to, um, our, our important population in our community, um, to make sure that they can live here, um, in Grove here. So I think these are, are good, it reflects what I think we need to be doing. Uh, and then I would also include council meeting broadcasting, I think that's something that, um, we're almost there on, and I would really like to see that done this year. Uh, and so, uh, thank you, staff, for doing this. Uh, thank you for the community for participating in it, and it, it makes a big difference when we have input directly from the community. Uh, and we also have ongoing input that we're requesting, uh, at the farmers markets. You'll see, uh, the city's now going to be holding a booth there at the local farmers market, and they have the ability for you to, just with a QR code, take a picture with your phone, and then they'll take you to a survey, and you can also voice your opinion there as well. Uh, and you can also request to hear from a council member. Uh, community input is so vital and important to making the local government that actually works for the people. Uh, we are all members of this community, we all believe in the community, uh, and this is how we become closer and tighter as the community is moving forward to other pieces.
Council member Gassel?
The, yeah, the nine priorities are all, are all really important, and if we can, if we can get these done, or at least take a lot of progress on them, it will, it will be amazing for the city. All right, I, my only concern would be that, that it's too many. Uh, but I, I've found in, in my experience, it's probably better to have a lot of things that you're working on. Uh, my, my, my students, uh, I, often will say that it's better to have like too many assignments than too few, because if there are too few, then they worry about each one. Uh, but of course, you don't want too, too many. Uh, yeah, so I, I, I think the nine, the nine are all really important, and, and I like the way that, that this, this, our staff has, has focused them. I, I think that, that the traffic calming really does need to be tied in with street repairs, and I like the, the idea that, that, you know, that, that's the, that could be the emphasis for that particular goal. Street repairs in general is a huge one, I don't know if, if everybody knows that seventy-two segments have gotten done. Uh, maybe, just within, I think within the past year, seventy-two segments of street repair, uh, street repair. And I'm starting to notice, I don't know if I'm the only one, I was wondering how much we have to do before people actually start to notice if it, if there's improvements. Um, and, and something I would suggest in regard to, to, I know we wanna wait on parking policy, but it would be good to identify areas where sidewalks should exist, uh, and maybe tie that in with sidewalks. If we can identify areas that should have sidewalks, maybe we could say, let's pretend this has a sidewalk and not park there. Uh, that's an idea that I have, because there's some, there, there's some areas where it's not so much the sidewalk that I need. It's the lack of a, it's, it's not having a car that wouldn't be there if there was a sidewalk. If that makes any sense? Um, so that's something, maybe to tie in the sidewalks and, and, and relate to traffic calming. We could maybe make some places that look like they have sidewalks, or get people thinking that, that, oh, yes, this is a place that would have a sidewalk. Act as if it does. Um, okay, um, yeah, th- these are wonderful, these nine, these nine, um, and, and I, 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 I will be astonished if we get them all done, but, but you know, I've been amazed at our, our amazing city and how much we get done. And, and, uh, I, I, I think I can support these. If staff came to me and said, oh, we can only do these five, I'd probably say, yeah, that's realistic. Uh, but if they were to, if our staff wanna push these nine, I, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mayor Protema Doza.
Several years ago, a former council member answered a question that I had about, you know, goal setting and why it was so important. And, um, it, it reminds me of that movie Up, and there's a dog in the movie at the very beginning of the movie, and the dog's like paying attention to his master and shaking his head, and then all of a sudden, the dog goes, "Squirrel!" And just runs off in the other direction. And, um, that happens often with staff. If, um, too often, we like see a squirrel, like, oh my gosh, we gotta do this, and we gotta do that. And there's so many things that we wanna do, but then we're pulling staff off of the projects that we've already given them a plan to do. So that's why we make these priorities, is so that staff can make a plan for the year ahead, and they don't have council members, you know, shouting squirrel all the time because there's another great idea. We have to save those ideas, and we can remind it all the time, that's not part of goal setting. So, um, you know, our goals, uh, we do get a copy of them, you know, and they're, they're attached, and, um, we, during the year, we ask staff, you know, where are, we follow up, where are we on this, where are we on that? So that's why this is so important. When I count, I, I count eleven italicized items when you count the two that, um, residents, that you're including in the residents. And one other thing I did wanna say, I was very, I am really sad to see that no, um, park improvements may lead into, um, our, our goals. And, but this is, the resident, this is not as important to residents either, it's not, um, just us. So, um, you know, we, uh, uh, that's my own personal thing, and is that I really, I, well, we would all like to see more and better parks, but these other items have, have, um, rose to the top and have more priority. So if we, um, if we take traffic calming and add that, which is, like, um, was a hot, uh, high vote, um, and put that with street repairs, I would suggest also, traffic calming, um, just like we said, with street repairs, with an emphasis on the areas near schools, parks, and neighborhoods. Um, I walked to, I recently walked to Berry Street Park from San Miguel, and it's, you know, every one of those streets, Central, San Miguel, and Mount Vernon are, are just, um, and, and our lieutenant knows this, and I see, um, our, uh, motorcycle officer out there all the time. But these, these are the streets that people definitely like to speed, speed down. And so, yeah, you kinda take your, there's no sidewalks on Mount Vernon either, so it's, it's very sketchy to walk over there. So please, my suggestion would be is if we move traffic calming with other street repairs, number one, that we also look at traffic calming near schools, parks, and neighborhoods, which would include Central, San Miguel, and Mount Vernon. Um, so then that brings us to ten items. But as we're discussing, I, I think we can, you know, of those ten, Connect Main Street is an on, is an ongoing. Um, the council meeting broadcasting, that's something that's underway. Um, we're just making it a priority because we wanna get that finished up. Um, and, so, I, I don't wanna take any, any of these off. Um, again, the sales tax measure, once November rolls around, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll be done with that. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to add is with regard to homelessness, um, when I was at the, um, California Youth Cities Leadership Conference last month, one, uh, suggestion that came out of the home, um, a workshop on homelessness, was having, um, an MOU with a city, having an MOU with their county. Because the county has a lot more resources than the city of Lemon Grove. So this is something I would like to see us focus on. Now, we have an MOU with East County cities, but Santee, and then I did not know this, but I found out at the meeting, because the mayor of Santee was also at the meeting. He said, oh, well, we have an MOU with the county, and he said, so does El Calo. And so, uh, well, maybe Lemon Grove should have an MOU with the county to, and that's a memorandum of understanding with the county that they're gonna supply resources to us to help, um, alleviate the homelessness issue in Lemon Grove. So that's my suggestion as we look into what Santee and El Calo have done, um, and, um, with regard to homelessness, and try to, um, incorporate that here in Lemon Grove. So, I, I count ten if we move the traffic calming, and I'm good with that.
Mayor Protem, I will revisit that the master MOU we have with the other East County cities also included the county. So that may be what Mayor, um, Mento was referring to, but I will double check with their city manager on both of those entities, because it was very specific that it was going to be a, a master MOU with all of the cities, in the East County and the counties. We've already partnered on it, and I know the board of supervisors did approve it when we all approved it. We approved it first, and then the board of supervisors approved it as well.
So what if we run it now?
Well, we, we run it, we're running it right now.
Right, right.
So I will, I will check with them to see whether they're applejack.
Okay.
And it would be very interesting to hear if there was funding that was allocated to Santee and El Calo resulting from the established MOU. What I know is that, um, what we have here is a work plan for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. And the work plan is established to ensure that we remain laser-focused on what's really important for the year. Um, it is very easy to get distracted by the, I'll call it the souk de jour, the issue of the day. Um, but, you know, we wanna make sure that we are carving out a realistic plan that's achievable for staff to continue to be laser-focused on, that will, I'll say, connect with the budget that we have for the year, that's very important. Um, this is the way we've been able to not only maintain what we have here in Lemon Grove in terms of quality of life, but to try and maximize every single dollar that we have and invest that dollar in our communities for improvement. So, um, and, and it's a monumental feat, especially when you have limited funding. Uh, for this year, our budget was eighteen point six million dollars. Uh, I was pleased to see, uh, what we, and see and read what we are projecting for next year. Um, but also too, we have to take into consideration that the cost to operate the city, um, is constantly changing as well. So, um, I'm, you know, all, all supportive of the plan that has been recommended by staff, um, but also the items that have been proposed to, um, to segue to the next fiscal year for consideration, and with the caveat that, you know, for those items that are ongoing efforts for the city, that, you know, we, we receive regular updates, uh, regarding the progress of those items. Yes, every single item on this list is important, every single item. And, you know, I am wholeheartedly confident that when we solidify this work plan, um, that staff will do everything that they can to drive and meet the needs in, in the various categories. So, uh, I want to, you know, check with staff, see if we provided enough feedback, so that when this item comes back, we can solidify it along with our budgets that we have. I say show them the money to make it happen, and, and that we can move forward into the next fiscal year.
I appreciate the counsel on the discussion, and staff will come back. One question that staff does have is regarding the downtown village specific one. As the, the priority is crafted, we would only move forward with this if we received grant funding. If that, is that the pleasure of the council, or would you like staff to come back at your next budget, adding about the three-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars from reserve funds? Reserve funds should be used for one-time endeavors, um, to complete this downtown village specific one as you originally envisioned.
So, um, what I'll say, um, I'm actually on board with, um, taking some of our reserves to invest in our future. I, I think it is important that, um, we really go through a thorough process to include not only council and staff input, but our community's input in terms of, uh, what the future of our downtown corridor will, will look like, how it will provide, and how it will provide not only business opportunities, but also a space and place where future generations can live next to per, to, next to public transportation. So I'm all on board with investing the three-hundred-and-seventy-five K right now. I think it's a, a worthy project, and it will help to, um, start that process to reshape our downtown corridor. I'll, um, segue over to council member Snow for comments.
So, um, I agree with the priority, um, because the way it was, it reads is that we were looking for So um I agree with the priority um because the way it was it reads is that we were looking for funding and investment for it. Not that we would actually accomplish it in the next year. Um we have significant structural damage throughout the city um with regard to the storm drains and I'm concerned about dipping into the reserve funds uh because we have this world, this universe of possible liability um for those and so I'm really hesitant to use the reserve funds for this uh type of project, especially when there is funding. Uh it has been funded in the past. It's an attractive project and I think it's a possibility. So I'd like to keep it the way it is that um it's we're looking for funding investment.
Tom, to remember, I still.
Yeah, I think that whatever the state is experiencing, we can't be far behind. And and with this with the state facing a a such a crisis, um yeah, we're actually very fortunate right now. Uh and it hasn't affected us more, uh but we have to keep in mind that it could um the the what the state is dealing with could eventually end up affecting us quite a bit more than it already has. Um I yeah, I think it'd be smart to hang on to that to that reserve. I also think that it would be smart to see what happens with the sales tax measure because if that passes, that's uh potentially five point nine uh million dollars. Um and would give us uh some more room to work with. And and it seems to me that uh the the downtown plan with economic development downtown is what I'm thinking of uh would actually, you know, if we were able to put resources into that, it would be something that would help our businesses and help them uh get uh the the penny on the dollar, you know, that's collected. Uh I think our businesses could come out ahead if we spent some of that money providing lines in downtown. Uh so I think that I think it might be smart to wait. Uh November's not far away. And and I like the general idea of using money that we have to promote economic development. And I think that kind of thinking is really good. I think that too often, cities respond, you know, bathrooms need to be cleaned, you know, streets need to be cleaned, problems need to be fixed. And of course, we have to respond, but over the, you know, we're talking five to ten years or more in the future, the successful cities are going to be the ones that figure out how to make the city grow, how to make it more attractive, how to get property values up, how to get businesses strong. And and so I like that. I love that kind of thinking, but I do want to hold off on using the reserve for the
Thank you. Um Mayor Protem Doza.
Um so my my concern about using our reserve fund um for this is are don't we um what I call like question is, how will this back to the um percentage that council has previously established that we would like to keep our reserve fund?
So uh when we go to the budget presentation, you will see that we are going to be um well within the twenty five percent that the county that the the council has established. But staff is clearly hearing that perhaps this might be something we revisit, you know, after the sales tax measure is passed um and and see if that that is probably the right kind of result one. And that will give us an opportunity to see out those grants that I know are coming online in uh July and August that we have our item with this very specific.
Uh thank you so very much. And and just for clarification, I'd like to know how much do we have in our reserves and what um is the actual percentage? As we know, the baseline is twenty five percent for reserves.
Madam Mayor, if we could revisit and we do the next item, you will have those numbers right in front of you on the PowerPoint presentation. If you can, you can hold your question and I'll get you the answer when we do our presentation.
Uh thank you so very much. And so have we provided with you with enough information?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh thank you. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is item number four of this fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. This item was continued from our June fourth, twenty twenty four, the council meeting. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Olivia Romero, to give the stat report. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I am pleased to present the draft twenty four, twenty five general fund budget, uh sanitation budget and CIP budget. Um as was discussed in the in the previous item, we have presented a balanced budget for you. Zap did take the extra ten days or so to refine our numbers and we have about ninety nine percent confidence on our expenditure projections as well as our revenue projections. So this, these numbers look a little different than the numbers that you had previously because we really looked at those and worked on them so we can get some some tighter numbers to go to. Next slide, please. So before I go into the budget, I um the next fiscal year I want to share with you because some of you have asked. We did receive, or a second year in a row, our budget award for a distinguished budget presentation um from the government uh Government Finance Officers Association. Uh that has been, this is the second year in a row we've received that based on our budget book and how much information our budget book has. If if any of you walk into City Hall, we have our plaque with our second medallion on there. We hope to fill up that plaque in the years to come with a transparent budget. And that really hands off to the former finance director um and the temp staff that worked on this budget to get this uh twenty FY twenty three, twenty four budget completed and recognized by their colleagues. And that is going to be the goal of the new finance director, the interim finance director, and the finance staff. And all I've heard me say is for the last couple of days. Next slide. So um the topics to be discovered today is we're going to talk a little bit about the budget process, budget basics, our general fund projections, our general fund reserve projections. Um and then Mr. Margia will walk uh walk you through the sanitation district projections as well as the CIP budget. Next slide. So this is our budget process. Um we kicked off the budget with staff on April twenty ninth. We held the council workshop on the twenty second. Um we're here today proposing a draft budget for consideration and discussion. And then we hope to come back on your next meeting on the June twenty fifth for formal adoption. I'm going to point out that normally a budget process is nine to six months. This budget was very much compacted in the schedule and we did it in about six weeks. And that really took the concerted effort of all of the departments that fed us the numbers, the interim finance staff, um uh Ms. Moro Tover, who is our interim finance director, um Ms. Bella Casares, who helped us um do this work. Um and both uh both really were tremendous help um as well as very long hours on all of our parts to get this done. Um next year with a new finance director, we will have a normal budget process to start this budget in December, not at the end of April. So this killed, this almost killed all of us, specifically me. Uh so our budget basis, so our major governmental fund is our general fund. Um it is all of our resources that are not restricted for a specific purpose. And later in this slides, we'll talk about the other funds. But the other funds have very restricted expenses and very restricted revenues. The one of the examples is transit. It's very restrictive based on the transit ordinance, what we can spend that money on. Um we have a certainty of the revenue coming in, so we can't use it for general purposes or reallocate it for general purposes. The general fund also maintains a uh reserve fund based on the council's direction. It is our day-to-day uh our day-to-day general fund. We pay most of our bills out of this general fund. A large majority of our budget is general fund focused. Um and we do have some contractual obligations that um we pay out of the general fund, which is our sheriff's contract and most of our CalPERS costs. So here's a quick financial overview. So um hopefully the pie you can all see in the audience. I know the council has the slides on their desk. But this is our revenue projection. The general fund of this pie is sort of that light green um uh light green pie that is to the right of the slide. That is all the general fund. General fund makes up fifty one percent of the consolidated budget. And so we're we're going to be focusing on this discussion today on that fifty one percent. The sanitation district makes up twenty two percent of the budget. And then the other various specific funds make up smaller portions of the the total I of budget. Next slide, please. And let's let's dive into our general fund revenue projections. So we are looking at a general fund revenue projection of twenty million, I I'm going to round up. Um the actual number is twenty point twenty twenty million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy four dollars. Uh with my discussion purposes today, I'm going to round it just to twenty one million. It makes it easier to say than that word salad. So our general fund revenue is projected at twenty one million, with the largest portion coming from sales tax at thirty nine percent. Property tax is coming in at twenty percent. Property tax in lieu, and that again is an exchange of vehicle license fees that are paid on cars um in exchange for property tax that is at nineteen percent. So the largest pie of our funding source comes from sales tax and property tax collectively. Uh the other ones are very much a little bit of a mismatch. Seventeen percent um is other funds and other funds includes um interest revenue. Um it includes um most of our lease revenue that we have. Um and the this has pie has grown just a tad bit based on our billboard revenue that we get. Billboard lease is worth over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Um a small portion is development fees, and those are really pasture fees and then fire department fees that we um need to collect uh for fire inspections. Next slide. Um as you can see on this slide, this is the actually the chart of our revenue projections that make up that twenty one million um that we are forecasting for the upcoming budget year. But just to talk a little bit about sales tax, sales tax is one of the most volatile um volatile taxes we have. It's subject to market conditions. Uh again, local businesses, we just talked a little bit about that. They don't have never any capacity to grow. So we have to help um help our business continue to grow, bring big new businesses in so we can continue to have the sales tax um revenue come into the city of Loma Grove. We do have professional consultants that look at this, work with the state to to make sure that we are getting all of the sales tax that we are owed to the city. Um and it's expected to grow about two percent from fiscal year twenty three, twenty four to this year. And that is sort of an estimate based on various market conditions. Um one includes as a market condition um the interest rate that the Fed is charging for primarily large ticket items. And next is our property tax and um our property tax revenue is about twenty percent of all of the revenue that we received. Um for those, just as a little primer for our property tax, how much property tax we can collect per year. And that is at about twelve cents. So citywide, on average, we collect twelve cents of every property tax dollar that is remitted by our um uh residents and businesses. So the majority of your property tax dollars really goes to the schools. Loma Grove School District and Grossmont Unified High get close to uh forty seven, forty eight percent or close to fifty percent of all of the revenue from the property tax we get for. Um and that number always stays the same because of Prop thirteen. And then as I mentioned before, property tax in lieu, this is really legislation that flipped uh giving cities property tax in exchange for reducing the vehicle license fee on those cars. That has actually grown at a very nice pace for us. And we're estimating that the growth this year will be about three percent. Our other revenues that I uh mentioned before makes up seventy percent of our general fund pie is our billboard. Um our billboard has built into the contract a two percent escalator every single year, so that will grow two percent. Um our our cannabis tax is estimated to go up an additional five percent from previous years. Um our building permit activity remains pretty steady, but this is an offset because we have a third-party contractor that really does all of our building reviews and does um all of our building inspections. And that is really a setup to almost pay for itself, where we don't make any money on that. Again, we've got some increased interest earnings based on some um creating a money market account for our day-to-day checking account that has been beneficial and has given us quite a bit of money at the knees in the first six months that we've we've created that. And then we're still getting our loan repayment from the former redevelopment agency area. This isn't assured every year that we're going to get it from the Department of Finance. They have to ensure that the tax increment is there. Um and this year, we're getting our loan payment and I believe it's about four hundred thousand dollars that will be paid back to the general fund, um which originally came out of reserves to help support um the development of the community development agency that the city wants to have. Next slide. We're going to move on to our projected general fund expenditures. So as you can see in the pie, and we're just focusing on general fund, we're not supposed to focusing on CIP or any of the specialty funds, truly the general fund. And as you can see, the general fund really pays for the lion's share of the sheriff's contract or the public safety contract and the fire contract. Those those two particular funds are really focused um and really supported by the general fund solely and wholly. Um administration is made up of my office, all of the internal operations of HR, of finance, um and and the city council is all created in the administration side of the house. Um public works is the public works department. This fourteen percent is the the general fund share of the public works, not the totality of public works. Um and then community development again makes up a smaller pie because that is a peep for service and that is largely supported by the development community that comes in and develops um or gets um uh or residents get permits to to do upgrades to their homes. So the next slide pretty much shows how the budget is broken out for that twenty one million dollar budget. Administration is about three point two, public safety is seven point five, and fire is six point three. Community development is about one million. And then again, the portion that the general fund pays for for public works is two point seven million. Next slide, please. I'll only share with you some of the significant budget expenditures that are projected for the um twenty four, twenty five budget. Um we have in we are increasing this budget about one point eight million dollars uh year over last. This includes a three percent increase for all employee classifications, including public works. We have, we took the time between the two meetings um and um worked with our negotiators to say if they would be amenable to the three percent during this budget year as well as, and we'll talk about this in a little later in the slide, um an increase in their duty pay um uh for the public works. This also includes increased costs for all of our contract services, which includes the sheriffs, and then our election costs. This year, the election cost that we have been given as an estimate from the revenue from the registered voters is a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. The previous year, it was seventy five. Um a lot of those election costs, and if there's very specific questions, um we can go over that during that time. The very, the increased cost is related to new state legislation in between the two the two um election years mandating um more translation, um self-service, return to ballots. There's a lot of stuff that the legislator has put on, which is now increasing the cost to the cities. The in, yeah, I talked about the sheriff's contract increase, um our overall management system of the Hartland Our overall management system of the Heartland J P A is increasing from about, is increasing an additional seventy thousand dollars. And that really is covering all of the management of the fire chief, the division chief, the battalion chief, the emergency operations director, and then their support staff as well. I will tell you, from a management standpoint, I would not be able to replicate the same management structure on our own. So we're getting a very good bang for our money. This also includes, this budget includes some capital purchases for the fire department, the striker agreement, fire hose replacement desperately needed, thermal camera, self-contained breathing apparatus. These are the apparatus that the firefighters put on their face as they're going into a fire. And then some additional protective clothing so we can afford them some, some additional safety, especially from the harm of the contaminants when they enter a fire, some other issues. So as we're getting those, those particular turnouts leave, they have a new set of turnouts that they can go to and respond to another fire. Public Works staff is requesting a street technician one as an additional position for the complement. That will give us three street technicians. Increasing the duty funds type in from what they currently have of two-hundred, two-hundred and five dollars per week to three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars per week. Some additional protective clothing for our public works folks. Increase, increase our sidewalk cleaning, power washing, and the various locations throughout our streets. Additional training, there is some state mandated requirements that we have to pay for some additional training, specifically our class B license for our public works folks. We're adding those costs in there. And Mayor Protim, to your meaning to make parks pretty, staff is recommending that we look at both very well-used parks to upgrade some of our benches, our barbecues, our drinking fountain, our drinking fountain replacements. Those are all sort of weathered and wear, and we need to make sure that we upgrade those. So one, we avoid risk, and two, we make the park a much more pleasurable experience for our residents and visitors. Community services, this budget is asking for new tables and chairs for the recreation rooms, specifically our support room in the recreation center. We've got a lot of tables and chairs that are falling down. According to staff, those are probably twenty-plus years old. And they need to be replaced expertly for our little, our little kids who actually use, the folks that use the recreation rooms for day camp and other services. And a lamination machine. I had a staff member who actually used her own funds to purchase a lamination machine. And so I told her, no, that's for your personal use. Put it in the budget, and we can afford, you don't have to use your own funds to, to do what your onboard costs need to, or what you need to have done to make sure you're working. As I mentioned previously, one of the most significant expenditure issues is the election cost increase. But the other I want to bring up is a U A L, or as it's defined is an unfunded accrued liability. That is related to pension, and that is our cost that we, we owe to CalPERS from previous either underinvestment or items in which we didn't fully fund at the time the CalPERS bill came due. And then again, our CalPERS employer rates have increased significantly. Our miscellaneous, in miscellaneous class, be it his room, to fourteen point thirteen percent. But the safety class is twenty-four percent. And those are, the safety classic are those that were employed with the city prior to two thousand and fourteen. And those will continually, that U A L will continue to rise based on the investment strategy of CalPERS. You have no say on what CalPERS does. Mayor, we're getting into the answer to your question. General fund reserve, again, this is the general fund reserve policy. I will summarize. Basically, the council has a twenty-five, a twenty-five percent contingency of the general fund. It is a moving target, so based on the general fund that you adopt is what our new twenty-five percent number is. Again, this is to use as temporary resources in economic downturn, to reduce any expenditure reductions, is to meet our emergency need, which we used tremendously in January of this year. And then if there's any unforeseen capital expenditures that we need to take care of, we, that were, was not contemplated in the budget. So in the next slide, so our current, as proposed in this budget, is compliant with the general fund. Our reserve fund at now, right now stands at about eight point four million dollars. And we have a restricted reserve fund of one point one, which helps pays our U A L for the CalPERS. It's a very restricted fund. I believe, if memory serves me correctly, our general fund twenty-five percent is about five million dollars, about five point two million. So we're in the good for about three million, three million dollars. This does not take into account some projects that we have on the pipeline to be fixed, related to some of this loan damage. We're in a healthy place, so we're probably going to be spending some of those funds this coming fiscal year. So as I opened up this meeting, is we have a balanced budget. Our projected revenue equals our projected expenses. Again, our expenses remain consistent. Funding, the expenses that we need to fund to deliver the services the residents demand. And again, this has not changed from year over year. We provide the same basic local government services at the lowest per capita rate of the other area cities. And the next slide will show you what that looks like. And I will point out that Sumana Beach, per capita, spends two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars per resident, where we spend seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The closest to us is Alcoa at nine hundred and forty-three. So we still deliver effective services at a very low rating for our residents. And again, as I mentioned, we are projecting revenue at twenty-one million dollars and expenditures at twenty-one million dollars, meaning that we have no net, we're not in the black and we're not in the red. We're almost perfect. Read, read that needle fairly well. Next slide. So this is a look at our revenue and expenditures over the years. And as you can see during the COVID years, especially coming out of COVID in twenty-one, twenty-two, our budget ended up increasing a lot of that due to ARCA funds that we received. And as you will see, we started to expand the ARCA funds. And as you see, we're very close to matching our revenue and expenditure. Your staff and council policy in years since I've been here on twenty-sixteen really have set, helped set up where we're at today financially and making sure that we really paid attention to where our money was coming from and really paid attention on how we're expending our money. And with that, I am going to turn it over to the remainder of the presentation, or at least the sanitation budget presentation at CIP, to Mr. Mergeya, our public works director, who will walk you through all of these slides.
Thank you, ma'am, city manager, members of the city council, mayor. Happy to present the Sanitation District F Y twenty-four, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five budget. So to begin with, can we go to the next slide, please? Overall, sanitation district is an enterprise fund. Essentially, it's a fee-based service as a enterprise fund. The district operates on a self-sustaining basis. It collects revenue through sewer fees. You know, over the past several council meetings, we've heard a lot about sewer fees. But essentially, revenues, the overall principle of an enterprise fund is that revenue should cover the cost of providing services. And happy to report that the sanitation district is in a well-position, is well-positioned for F Y twenty-four, twenty-five. Next slide, please. So as I alluded, the overall fiscal condition of the sanitation district is, is good. The fund balance, operating reserves remain stable. You know, this, this evening, we heard the introduction of ordinance number thirty-four, where we were keeping sewer rates constant, no increase from the previous year. Because the sanitation district's funds are in a good position and in addition to other reasons with regards to the capital improvement program, which I'll touch upon here shortly. But overall, the various funds from the sanitation district all are in a stable condition. Capital reserves, pure water, which I'll delve here shortly. Next slide, please. If we look at the sanitation district's operating revenue for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we see, we see a slight uptick. Again, this is based on conservative budgeting. As the district board recalls, you know, we, we converted our billing method to a hybrid method from an E D U-based billing methodology to a consumption-based methodology for the commercial side. Again, residential remains E D U-based. But we're in, we're going to be in year two of this new billing methodology. And so staff is taking a very conservative approach in estimating revenues because we really, you know, we really haven't set a trend with regards to what that commercial revenue, what that commercial revenue looks like. So we need probably another year or two to determine, you know, what the overall impact of that, that change is. So, but otherwise, on the revenue side, pretty stable. Next slide, please. On the expense side, we're seeing a slight uptick, about five percent for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five compared to the current year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Salaries and benefits, there is a slight savings. Again, we've been operating without a sanitation district supervisor for some time. In addition, we had, well, we're operating without a sanitation district supervisor and our superintendent slash operations manager have been vacant, is vacant. And so, you know, we're assuming some salary savings there. For operating expenses, again, a slight, slight decrease. Mostly just moving some various operating expenses and consolidating some of, some of the budgeted areas. I could go into specifics. With regards to the contracted services, this is where you see an increase. And essentially, this third line here represents our metro J P A cost. So we're seeing increased costs for the, the district's contribution to metro J P A for the treatment and transportation costs. That's where a majority of our operating costs go. And so we're seeing approximately like a three percent increase in essentially the city C I P's cost to metro J P A. And then contractual services, again, we have some slight increases where we have, we included some funding for spot repairs, minings, in projects that are under the kind of capital improvement threshold. Those, so we had some additional funds for, for contracted services. Under capital expenses, this item, this line item here represents the city's, the district's contribution to pure water. Again, this is the first year where pure water costs will be in effect, as was detailed in the, one of the sewer periods that we had previously. As part of the recommended, SaaS recommended rate options, we had no increases. And then the second part of it was starting to draw down on pure water. And so pure water costs for the district for the first year is about three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And so you'll be seeing that transfer from the pure water fund to, to operations to pay for, to offset those pure water costs. And then continuing with district's policy is transferring funds about one point one, one point five million into the CIP reserve fund, which has been the standard practice for the district. And so that, that represents the capital expense line. Again, overall, an increase of about five percent for the previous year. This chart here, again, just is a pie chart of the table above with a majority of the operating costs going to contracted, contracted services, again, the three point seven million. And again, that big piece is metro J P A. So for, for transportation of sewage and for treatment of sewage. And then the next, next big portion is our CIP expenses. Again, those are the transfers into the reserve. This is separate from Fund sixteen, which I'll discuss here shortly with regards to the status of our capital improvement program. Next slide, please. So Fund sixteen is the district's capital improvement fund. And as you can see, we have an anticipated large capital improvement program for this coming fiscal year. A lot of these projects are carryover projects. And, you know, it's been a minehole to get these off the books. And we're in a position where, you know, we will see construction on many of these CIPs this year. F Y eighteen, nineteen, this project is upsizing an eight-inch sewer line to a ten-inch sewer line in the Baker's Field Channel. So it's about eight hundred feet of sewer. And, you know, this project has represented some challenges because there's environmental concerns being located in a, in a channel. And so we are budgeting thirty thousand. We have to go back and do some additional design work that is required by some of the utility companies. But as soon as we finish up that, that design, we're, we can then bid the project. The plans are at ninety-five percent, so we are pretty close to bidding out that project as soon as we address the utilities companies comments. F Y nineteen, twenty, sewer project. This project is a hundred percent design. We are currently working through easement documents. And so we should see an item coming before the board on approval of easements for that project. And then as soon as that's done, then we, staff will be prepared to bid out that project. Now, main project there is the construction of the sewer pump station off of Central Avenue. And in addition, in addition, there is a couple of spot repairs and line replacements throughout the city. And then following up on that, F Y twenty, twenty-one, and F Y twenty-one, twenty-two, and then F Y twenty-two, twenty-three sewer rehab. That project is at ninety, ninety percent design. And so we're currently reviewing the bid documents and any final changes with reverses to design. And that project is scheduled to go out to bid in the fall. So we'll be seeing construction on that project sometime towards the later end of the calendar year. And that project consists of sewer manhole rehabs, a lot of line replacements, a line, sewer lines lining throughout, throughout the, the city. And then lastly, to round up, the CIP portion is CIP twenty-four, twenty-five. And this project is, we're adding some design money. So the district historically does design, design construction, design construction. And so we're prepping for putting an RFP out to get a consultant to design the next. And so we're prepping for putting an RFP out to get a consultant to design the next round of sewer CIPs, which is the, if I recall correctly, it is the replacement or upsizing of a line that runs along the San Altos neighborhood. And then lastly, our CIP also encompasses vehicle replacement. Our sewer cleaning truck is twelve years old currently. Sewer cleaning trucks last maximum eight to ten years. And so we definitely have, you know, made the most use of our sewer cleaning truck. In most agencies, you know, you primarily just use it for sewer. But here, we, it's a workforce. We use it for sewer. Where if we have any storm drain related cleanings, it is all around workforce. So this vehicle replacement was actually scheduled to be replaced last year, but we pushed it off to this fiscal year. It's also included in the sewer rate studies, so it's programmed in. And so staff is requesting the replacement of that vehicle. The last thing I'll mention about this vehicle is because of emission standards here in the state of California, the, it is very difficult to get a single axle tandem truck. So meaning you have two wheels in front, two wheels in the back. Usually sewer, these sewer trucks have another set of rear tires or another axle. Because the larger truck kind of meets the emissions, it's kind of like a loophole in emissions. And so it's difficult to get the single axle tandem truck to meet emissions. And so you get a lot of manufacturers that don't build a lot of these single axle tandem trucks. The wait time to build and obtain a truck is about fourteen to sixteen months. We've reached out to multiple vendors. There is one vendor currently that has a single axle truck. They have it on hold for us should the district board approve the budget and proceed with that purchase. Otherwise, we will, the district would be waiting, you know, as I mentioned, sixteen months out before they would receive anything. And our sewer truck as it, as it is, is at the end of its useful life. And so that wraps up the Fund Sixteen. Next slide, please. This with regards to significant changes, as I mentioned, the Gapbacks, that's the manufacturer of sewer cleaning truck. You know, with any type of heavy equipment, whether it be fire rigged, these vehicles are costly. I purchased one in my other agency about four years ago. And it was a, a larger Gapbacks. And the cost at that time was five hundred and twenty-five thousand for a larger vehicle. And so you're seeing this cost rise, which is the nature of the industry. The Gapbacks, and then the other recommended purchase or not purchase in addition to the district is the addition of the sanitation crew leader. If you recall, this fiscal year, we added a crew leader position to the streets. And we had, the intention was to test how I would film the streets. The, it's going very well. The idea is to have the, the crew leader position to serve for succession planning. Also for, you know, we don't have a program yet for FOG, fat oils and grease. That will be coming before the district board next, sometime next fiscal year. But developing a fat oils and grease program for our commercial side, and the idea would be to have the crew leader oversee that program. This fiscal year, we've seen a number of sanitation sewer overflow spills related to restaurants. And part of that is because we, the district does not have a FOG program. And so the idea is to have that disposition oversee that program. Next slide, please. And then with regards to the other funds, the sanitation district, there is no other significant or substantive changes. And all remains status quo. And I will turn it over to Mance.
Thank you, Mr. Moria. Again, the, the next, the next two slides are really our other funds, which really is, was a part of the general fund discussion. And these are very specified funds, as you can see, and have very specified purposes. And so our revenue and our, our charges are free, which is based on what is in these particular funds. It all remains status quo, and there's no significant changes in any of these funds. Next slide? And again, Mr. Moria will take it and then at the wall, back to Mr. Moria, so he can talk about our CIP program. Can you move to the next slide? So with the CIP program, he is focusing in on the keep going plan, sidewalk master plan that he did. And this really is a five-year plan or five-year outlook. I do want to maintain that a majority of the city council's carryover funds, which is about five million dollars of the twenty-one million, is really in capital projects. And a lot of that, or a majority of that is some of our projects as well. So they're easy carryover. Mr. Moria?
Great, thank you. So a big portion of our CIP again is driven by our pavement management plan and our sidewalk master plan. Over the five-year period, our CIP, in addition to looking at FY twenty-four, twenty-five, it takes into consideration your capital improvement needs over an overall five-year period. So for the five-year time span, we have almost forty-six million dollars in funded projects. When you look at streets, sidewalks, storm drains, facility upgrades, and about forty million in unfunded needs in projects. These are projects identified, and mostly these projects are your ADA transition plan projects that have been identified per facility. So projects that we know that we have to update our facilities to meet ADA or be compliant with ADA. In addition, there are some projects as well that we've identified, facility-type projects. And, you know, our facilities are aging, so there are floor replacements, window replacements, and the light. So that's, that encompasses the forty point one. And then the forty-eight point five million in unfunded need, that number is derived by the need in the pavement management program. So I don't know if you recall, but last year, the council adopted the pavement management program. And in that report, it identified about seven, seven point two million dollars for streets under twenty-five PCI. So we have unlimited funds, so it costs seven point two million dollars to upgrade all your streets under twenty-five PCI. And then in addition, I think it was an additional thirty-three million dollars for streets that are under your seventy PCI. So over the five-year period, to get from a PCI of what we currently are, I think fifty-six, to an eighty PCI, that, that number was in the forty million dollar range. In addition, this number includes sidewalk improvements. So in twenty-twenty-three, the council adopted the sidewalk master plan, which identified over forty-two hundred sidewalk deficiencies. So whether that's less faults in sidewalk panels, non-compliant ramps, panel, sidewalk panels that need replacing. And so there is about close to five million dollars in, in need for those types of projects. So that's where that forty, forty-eight point five million dollar number derives. Next slide, please. So majority of our CIP is funded through gas tax SB one, Transnet. Again, both those various funding sources primarily go to street improvements and also storm drain improvements. But again, a majority of that funding goes to streets. And with, you know, a heavy concentration on storm drains after the storms, the storms in January, should council want staff to focus more on storms, it's give and take. So we can definitely do that, but there's going to be less money for streets based on these funding sources. Our CIP fee, we utilize that fee for upgrading our traffic signals. So this, this fiscal year, we included three traffic signals that we're looking at, at making upgrades to. And so we're continuing looking at additional traffic signals for this upcoming year. And so that's pretty much for, pretty much traffic signal head, tollers, lube, pedestrian push buttons, pretty much making traffic signals in the city, bringing them up to standard. Sanitation district, we just covered that. So it also includes those sewer CIP fees. And then lastly, our ARPA funds, which we'll go over some of the ARPA-funded projects, which some have been completed, but a majority of them have been carried over and expected to be completed in FY twenty-four, twenty-five. And so that's the majority of our, what encompasses the FY twenty-four, twenty-five CIP funding. For FY twenty-four, twenty-five, we've identified approximately four hundred thousand in additional projects. And certainly go over those. And with that, go to the next slide, please. All right, so with the, you know, in addition to our CIP for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, the storms from January threw a wrench in our plan. So we kind of had to divert our attention to our program, CIP, to focus on storm-related capital improvement programs that got forced upon us. And so we just want to quickly provide an update on what has been completed, what's in progress. And a lot of these items have come before the council for approval. So the first one being six-nine-seventy-one Broadway sequel. This is the sequel that occurred behind the subway, subway shop on Broadway. This was a seventy-two inch storm lane, storm drain line that sent a ten-foot segment collapsed. Got that replaced. The next one is Federal Boulevard repaving from the sixty-four hundred block of Federal Boulevard, Broadway MacArthur. This project was about a hundred and thirty thousand. You know, sections of the pavement washed out with the storm. And so staff took the opportunity to repave both lanes of Federal Boulevard. The next two projects are storm drain related projects. They are, first one being Nickel Street, or AKA the Little League, Little League Fields. And so this is an anticipated five hundred thousand dollar project. This project was an emergency project that the council approved sometime in March. And it's about forty-five percent complete. It consists of installing eight hundred, oh, excuse me, five hundred feet of new storm drain. And we are about halfway there. And then the last one, eighty-two forty-three Golden Avenue. This is a storm drain repair project that was identified as well. We're in progress. You know, we'll be coming before the council with a contract to get this project started. In the in-progress, meaning we, before we start a project, we have to survey it and get a design. So that's where this project is. All right, next slide, please. So this slide here represents the completed projects that staff has completed this fiscal year. Recreation center door replacement, council allocated funds for FY twenty-three, twenty-four to replace the rear doors of the recreation center. We had that project completed earlier in fiscal year. The council also allocated funding to replace the public works yard gate. If you recall, during our CIP workshop last year, we had a non-functioning gate. We had to manually open and close it. So that, you know, that project was completed. Lenoir playground replacement. It was nice to see many of you at our brand opening two weeks ago now. And so this project is in the closeout phase. We have one change order on this project, so we'll be coming before the council on acceptance, acceptance of that playground. So, but for the most part, construction's complete, and there are no outstanding issues with regards to the contracted work. The FY twenty-one, twenty-two, street rehabilitation Crane Street project is completed. We completed this project in August of last year and as part of our catch-up of our CBG program. And then Buena Vista Avenue, we completed about, I think sometime in March is when we completed that project along with Federal Boulevard repaving. It occurred on the same day. And so council has already accepted this project. And we're looking forward to address, or now being up to date. And that's just a sign that I need to talk a little faster. All right, so we have a very busy fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five ahead of us. A lot of our ARPA-funded projects are carryover because they're in progress. So our fire station bait door replacement, it is, and it's noted here in progress. The bait doors have been installed. We are working on punch list items with the contractor before we close out that project. And so there's going to be some, that funding's going to be rolled over to next year before, you know, we release retention, get that project to acceptance to the council. And so while the overall construction's complete, the closeout documents, we're still working on. Fire station drainage, in progress. The council approved this contract a couple of months ago. We are waiting for the bait doors to be completed first prior to getting another contractor in there. You never want two contractors working side by side. And so we're in the process of scheduling a pre-con with, with that contractor. The next several items, the community center roof replacement, fire station roof replacement, city hall slash sheriff substation roof replacement, and lead house roof repairs. The council awarded a contract several weeks ago. We are in the contract routing process. As soon as that contract is executed, we will have our pre-con meeting to get scheduled and getting those projects completed. We anticipate that October timeframe is when the roof replacements will be, will be completed. Next slide? Moving on with carry, carryover. In addition to the roof replacement project, we have our HVAC replacement project, which will be in tandem or parallel with a roof replacement. Again, the council awarded this contract several weeks ago, which I can shortly thereafter be, it awarded the roof contract. Our, that contract is being routed with the vendor and will be holding a pre-con in conjunction with our roofing contractor. And then, so that moves us down towards the three-quarters way down. Community center front door replacement for this facility, it's in progress. We've received a couple of votes. We have to work with our VC here in this facility to ensure that they, that our contractor is not, can work along around their schedule. And so we will, we will be looking at having that contract executed sometime in the, in the fall. And so we will, we will be looking at having that contract executed sometime in the, in the fall. Recreation center fire suppression, this, this project's in the bid stage. We need to go out for another quote just to verify that all the components that we need for that, for the rec center is, is sufficient. We had some delays with this project as we were working with the school district, and we thought that it required state architect approval, but it does not. So we're moving forward with this project. Fire station turnout room. Again, this is constructing a separate room for the turnout here. This project has not been started just due to staff, staffing, and the time required to get a contractor on board with design. And frankly, staff needs to get a little bit more educated on those requirements. And so we'll be working with the fire department on looking at. But Lameza Station and what their turnout room looks like to do something similar here. And go to, next slide, please. Continuing on with carryover projects, this is our park section. Park restroom replacement for Berry and Lemon Grove Park. This is, this project is in progress. We are currently developing a, or putting together the like grant application for the project. So even though we were awarded member funds for the project, we still have to go through the grant application process. And so that includes putting together a CPOD notice, a non-exempt for the project. And so you have to draft up some paperwork or an environmental document for that, for that project. And so we're currently addressing that. But the idea is to get the application in. Once it's in, we can then work on our bid documents. Connect Main Street Phase 1 and 2, this is currently in construction. In September of last year, the council awarded a construction contract in Pacific for Phases 1 and 2 and 3. And so those two phases are in construction currently and is scheduled to be completed by August, I believe, for both those phases. Phases 2 and 3, this project, or this phase, excuse me. The city was recently awarded an ATP grant of 4, almost $4.9 million. So this looks at adding back in a lot of the features that were included originally in the design that we had to exclude. Mostly rail crossing safety features that MTS required as part of the project that we couldn't address. We had to exclude those and kind of carve out that section in San Miguel. And so this project looks to add those back in, in addition to adding some additional components. Connect Main Street Phases 4 through 6. The, again, this looks at extending the project all the way down to Massachusetts, from Mount Vernon, Massachusetts, and the city received an ATP grant for a rebuilding box. We haven't started, again, we haven't started both Phases 2 and 3 and 4 and 6 because staff needs to put together an RFP, a select, a consultant to finish, to put the design together for those phases. Streets less than 25 PCI, what most of us are interested in, streets. So this project, again, the council awarded 1.6 million in ARPA funds. They awarded 1.16 as part of the FY 23, 24 budget. And then in January of this year, the council allocated an additional $500,000. If you recall that exercise, that we had four different zones, and the council put together their input on what streets they wanted to see additional streets. And so they allocated an additional $500,000 to bring that up to 1.6. We are, so just so you know, we are currently in the mark out phase. So before we repave any street, whether it's story seal or mill and overlay, we have to walk every street up. Our city inspector has to walk every street. We then identify sections of the pavement where the treatment needs to be a little bit more intense. So for example, Street 8 might consist of a story seal, but you might have two sections that require the digouts prior to the street being story sealed. And so he takes all that data, puts it in the spreadsheet, and all that gets calculated for the bid document. So of those 72 street segments, we have to walk every one and identify areas that require digouts. So that's where the process is now. The only streets that are remaining are the major arteries, so Massachusetts, Broadway, and Lemon Grove Ave. And we are looking to finish up that data collection, review the data, and then put the project out to bid. Following up, the FY 22, 23, street rehabilitation program. That's last year's funds that we're rolling over, or that we're including in our overall street rehabilitation package, along with FY 23, 24. So we're looking at a really large street improvement project coming in FY 24, 25. And again, the streets in FY 22, 23, 23, 24 are all included in that 71, 72 street segment list. And so there won't be any delays with regards to the day we have to do more mark outs or whatnot. And then the last line, the FY 23, 24 CDVG program. We are currently preparing our bid documents to rehabilitate Corona Street, Idle Place, and Davidson Avenue. Because this grant is funded through federal funds, it has to go through a separate contract, not part of our street rehabilitation program. The thought process is we'll, we're aiming to bid those, those projects together. So hopefully that, the contractor who bids on our larger street rehab will also bid on the CDVG project and hopefully get some savings there. Next slide, please. All right, so our annual sidewalk replacement. So the council has allocated 120,000 this fiscal year. We're proposing to roll that over to this fiscal year. Part of that was, we were, the council adopted the sidewalk master plan, and it included, you know, again, as I mentioned, 4,200 deficiencies. We currently don't have a GIS consultant at all, so it took some time to get that data information and migrate it into our GIS platform so that staff can look at our GIS platform and now determine, okay, which locations are we doing and what zones. We've finally completed that, that project. We've identified 109 sites that require, that have vertical lifts between an inch and two inches. And so part of tonight, council awarded a contract for, contractor to do remediation for sidewalk hazards. And so that, that contract will go to addressing our sidewalk deficiencies. The other portion of our sidewalk program is installing new sidewalks, improving EVA ramps, and also installing new sidewalks where feasible. And so again, to recap, our annual sidewalk program, there's really two elements to it. The first element is, is addressing trip hazards. The second element is installing new sidewalks and replacing concrete mills. Traffic signal upgrades, I alluded to earlier. Again, we're continuing that project. So this year, we looked at Madera in Massachusetts, Lemon Grove Ave, Broadway, and Skyline and Palm. And we finished up the assessment of what, what those intersections need. And now we're going to put those needs into a bid document and put that project out to bid. Sanitary sewer video inspection, this is a carryover from last year. This is, this project essentially is getting the contractor onboard a video or CCTV every sewer line in the city so that it would give us a better sense of real-time information of what lines are in distress and need attention. Annual storm drain rehabilitation project, the council awarded 740,000 this past fiscal year. And staff was in the process of identifying segment lines that needed replacement. And then the storm hit, and I put a pause on things. So that, to be honest, it put a pause on things. One, new needs arose, new easements that we never knew existed arose. And so we had to reassess our priorities. We now put together a game plan on what that 740,000 is going to address. So we're, we have a list of storm drainage facilities that, that that funding will go directly to. And the following lines that I mentioned earlier, sewer rehab projects, 1819, 1820, 2021, and 22, 23, are all carryover sewer projects that are